All right, so I will open up the December 6, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Lakeville. The entire board is present, no one is in attendance. Our first order of business is to... Happy birthday!
Thank you.
Is to continue our tax rate classification hearing. We received new information from our assessors relative to that. This number has been certified by DOR. We have a motion somewhere, don't we?
It's on number one.
Let me just... You still carried the estimated single tax rate as incorrect in that statement above that, just so you know.
So where's the...
The Lakeville Board of Selectmen votes in accordance...
That's not a motion. Is that what we read?
That's what you did, yes, stating...
I move that the Lakeville Board of Selectmen vote in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 56 as amended. The percentage of local tax levy which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2018 tax rates and set the residential factor at 1.0 with the corresponding CIP shift of 1.0 pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. That's my motion.
And I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The motion carries, it's unanimous. Our second order of business is to revisit the 40R application to the DHCD. All right, so... At our last meeting on November 30th, we talked about this a little bit. We were hoping to get some density numbers from Bob's attorney, and then we have some emails that went back and forth about all of this stuff. You have some information...
Yes.
...on this, right?
Yes. If I may, Mr. Chair, Town Council did receive the layout of Bob's project on the last page, but I guess there's been some miscommunication. And when I look at it, I don't see the three or four-story unit over 55. So I don't know if his...
Right, this is the 40B plan, but if he were to do a 40R, he'd have an apartment building instead of the lot D stuff, I think is what...
Yeah.
...said. So that's this piece up here...
Right.
...be replaced with an apartment building. Like, an affordable apartment building, I think, for over 55, I think is the intention. I don't want to speak for him without, which is my understanding.
Because I guess he talked to you today, John?
Well, right, right. My discussion was obviously prior to this letter because I had Bob's attorney talk to Amy today. And certainly, there's various bonuses. There's a density bonus, there's an incentive bonus, there's the 40B credit for the number of units, and I think we're talking somewhat apples and oranges. So where we left it is Bob and I were dealing somewhat through his attorney, through Amy just getting feedback. Amy's suggestion at the end of the day was, we should all get together to make sure we are addressing the density bonuses, the incentive bonuses, and not talking about credits for 40B housing against inventories and talking about a density bonus versus an incentive bonus. So her suggestion was, she's happy to meet with us all as a group, she's happy to meet with our designated Mitzi Hollenbeck, no, or any way that we want to do that. But there's... The miscommunication is, she wanted the density requirements of certain things, density's one thing, there's incentive bonuses, and I want to make sure that we are able to try to maximize what the town gets for both of those categories. I'm still not... Of course, now the builder gave Amy the plan, I think.
It's on the third page, John.
Right, which I'm not going to read through it now because I just received it. But I want to make sure that we're talking about all the appropriate bonuses and that the two attorneys, our attorney, Bob's attorney, and Bob is there to make sure all the questions are asked in the single room.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful in terms of just putting it all... So we all hear the same thing at the same time?
Right, 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 not bits and pieces of it.
Right, and that way, it's both attorneys are there.
So if you'd like, they can come before the board, and we have them at one of our board meetings, and hopefully, I'm just out to address the density and incentive bonuses, not the 40B inventory of houses. It's going to count for that anyways.
Do you think they could come to that meeting that we have on the 15th? Which is a daytime...
Well, I really think that's up to Bob's attorney and Amy.
I don't have... That day is bad for me, it's a Friday. I don't have a whole lot of time that day. I have two closings, so...
Okay.
I'm going to be working, goofing off at the town hall, and working again.
Okay, so never mind.
So... But here's the question, is this less dense than what the current stuff would allow? If we just extended... This is less dense than 200 apartments, correct?
Well, the first point is, we don't know the developable land, okay? He's got the drainage, that's a calculation you have to come up with on the acreage of the developable land, and...
No, I know, but I guess my point is, is that that's all we need to know, really. If this is less dense than what exists, then we're not concerned about changing the density because we know what he's putting on there.
Right.
The only place where it would matter would be the parking lot. Do we want to have or allow as dense of a development on that parking lot as what's already...
We said we weren't going to do the parking lot.
All right, so the parking lot's off the table?
Yeah, that's what we had mentioned the last time, was that we're not talking about the parking lot. All we're concerned about is just making sure that this isn't restrictive.
Right.
And the answer to the que... I don't have that answer. I'd rather ask Amy that.
True, but I think that if you look at this, I think the answer is, obviously, it's less dense.
I would think, versus an apartment house that goes up...
But that's all we want to know, is it less dense? If it is, then we don't necessarily need to do anything with the density, assuming that he's going to build this product, unless you want to mold the density to fit there so he can only build this.
Well, the only question, I think, would be...
I guess the question is, what's more likely to pass at town meeting?
Well, I think, though, that the issue at hand is, does this, as written with the existing 40R, would it even remotely qualify for a density bonus? The answer's probably no, because it's less dense.
It can be, though.
Right, exactly, it can be, but you still don't qualify for the density bonus.
Right, no, I get it.
And if I don't qualify for the density bonus, then why am I even going to change it?
Exactly, that's kind of my...
From a 40B, if I'm not going to get $3,000... Trust me, without going back looking at my notes, okay? I can't address something without going back looking at the notes, if you will, but...
I think it all counts.
But if we're not going to get $3,000 a unit, then it doesn't make any difference how it's owned.
Yep.
So...
All right, so we'll get those guys in the room and we'll talk through all this.
Do we qualify for this, this, and this? If we don't, why the hell are we...
Yeah, why bother?
Trying to do a 40R if you're really not building?
Right, we were about to scrap it at the last time anyways, but I think what we want to make sure is that a 40B, then, we qualify for the number of affordable units for our subsidized housing inventory on the 40R, you know, do we lose the ability that if it's under 40R that it doesn't qualify for the 40B? I don't know if that's...
No, I don't...
It's still the affordability piece, so we can still do it.
I think it all... Right, that answer, I think, is, becomes a regular 40B.
I think the more times you ask the question, the more times you get a different answer from people that we ask the question of.
I kind of believe that, too.
Right, that's why I would want them in the same room.
Exactly.
Same room, because we're talking credits, credits for what? 40B affordable housing? I don't really care.
I just want to know, is there a benefit to the town to even bother doing a 40R overlay or leave it alone?
That's all I want to know.
Here's a proposal on the table that's going in to DHCD anyways.
Right, that's all I want to know.
Agreed.
Do you want me to try to put them on first on the 20th? December 20th?
If they're available, yes, maybe, if they're available.
What do we have, Horizon? Seth Pickering will be a quick...
What's he from again?
Green Communities, he wants to do a special presentation.
And the Energy Board's going to be invited, obviously. Okay.
Yeah, you just put them in wherever.
Yeah.
645, okay.
December when, 20th?
20th is your next meeting.
If you want to come early, we have a CDC meeting right before that.
Ooh, hang on, let me write that down. All right, okay, number three, request to rescind letter of non-opposition for Natural All right, Jeff Barton of Natural Remedies has ceased its application efforts as a registered marijuana dispensary. At least he contacted us and told us, right?
It's a plus, it's rare.
So, we have issued three different letters. He's just looking for rescinding two of them, or is that...
I think all.
Just not... He just wants them all off the table?
We updated one of them, so the last letter we updated was that last one that dated May 1st because they decided that they wanted to do both dispensary and cultivation at 310. So if you remember, we had that, like, modification to the first letter, so it's really just two active letters that exist, one on Harding Street and the other on...
They've decided to invest in Bitcoins instead with the money. That's what they're going to do. Marijuana's old, everybody's doing Bitcoin now, so... So, all right, so I move that we rescind the... All letters to Natural Remedies, all letters of non-opposition.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gone. All right. Renewal of annual agreements for towns utilizing the Lakeville Animal Shelter. We have 10 towns that board their dogs in Lakeville, and of those 10, seven have voted to continue their contracts with Lakeville. I'm assuming those are the same contracts that I signed before the meeting. So with that said, I will make a motion that we approve the contracts with the Cushnett-Berkley-Bridgewater-Carver East Bridgewater-Freetown in Rochester.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yes.
With the term to expire.
I just want to know that we're okay with the fees? Yeah, the animal control officer has, you know, gone through them because I know I had a conversation with him about surrenders and issues like that. It doesn't seem to be on these contracts. So where, if someone took a dog in and then they decide they want to bring it back, I guess from the town, they were spending more money in getting the dog neutered than what they actually were getting the adoption fee? Maybe that has nothing to do with these town agreements anyways, but I just want to, like, he's okay with these, I assume, is what it really is.
Right.
Because we checked with him on which ones he would want to, and he thought of changing it, and then he called me back and said, no, keep it the way it is.
What were the thoughts of changing it?
The questions I have is the date, expiration date, the new expiration would be December 31, 2018.
18, yeah.
And then, did the other three towns that didn't return it, did we contact them and they said they're not interested?
No, I believe they had later selectmen meetings, so they just haven't gotten...
Right, right, so I think they'll be back.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
David's very happy with Wareham, that agreement has sorted out very well.
Yeah, I think these towns are very, very happy to use us as a resource.
Right, they may come back, okay.
It's just a matter of timing, I think.
He was, David was thinking about, it's when someone goes to pick up their dog, making them pay in the other town, which is what they were supposed to do. He wanted, he called Tracy and I to talk about maybe changing that arrangement, but he's worked it out with the communities, so...
Okay.
And we did raise the adoption fee, so it's covering the spay or neutering, the chip, all the shots.
Right, but that's for us adopting, that's not for taking two different issues. This is just renewing, we're stirring your dog here.
I was told tonight by my youngest daughter that we have to get dog and cat food and squeaky toys because they're doing a food drive for the animal shelter in her kindergarten class.
Yeah, they do that at kindergarten.
They always do that, very generous.
Yep, good stuff. All right, yeah, so these would expire on December 31, 2018.
18.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries, it's unanimous. Review and vote to renew annual liquor licenses. Everybody did what they were supposed to. So we have 15 liquor licenses up for renewal, we have all the information we need, this would be for January 1 through December 31, 2018. I move that we approve the following. All F Grasso DBA Tuto... Doesn't he do Grassos?
Italian grocery.
Grassos.
But I think, I don't think they changed it. Did Tudo Italiano change the name?
It's a different name, it's a different name in the bill.
Not on the liquor license.
Okay. Gulf Resources, these are for package store wine and malt. Package Store All Alcohol, this is the gold standard of liquor licenses. This is the Savis Liquors, Inc., BBP, Inc., DBA Muckees, Tamrac Wine and Spirits, Inc., Avar Liquors, Inc., DBA Star Liquor Market. And that is it. Restaurant All Alcohol, Hawaii Corporation, DBA Orchid of Hawaii, Pacoy Brook Golf Club, LLC, DBA Pacoy Brook Pub, mouthful, Lakeville Golf Club, Inc., La Baron Operating Company, LLC, DBA La Baron Hills Country Club, The Back Nine Club, Inc., Baldi's Pizzeria, Inc. Club All Alcohol, the Lakeville Ariee, number 3994, DBA Fraternal Order of the Eagles, Inc. General On Premises Wine and Malt, Lakeville Virtual Entertainment Group, Inc., General On Premises All Alcoholic Beverages, The Bartending Service of New England, LLC. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
With discussion. I thought Seasons Gas Station got one for beer and wine, they did not, they came before us.
They canceled it.
They did, okay.
Their manager that they had, there was an issue with him, so they didn't go forward.
Okay, I knew they came to us.
Does the description on the actual license itself make a big difference? Because the Pacoy one hasn't been updated for what he has done for the inside of his business?
No.
No.
We can't change...
I don't know if it mattered.
The intent.
Change the description on the license unless the applicant comes in for a revision on the license premise.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Probably just...
Do we ask Frank if he's had problems with any of these? I assume he would have come to us, okay.
No.
Okay.
And I do monitor the DUI reports, we get those on a quarterly basis, and we haven't had any issues with that either.
Okay.
All right.
Town rolls up and goes to bed about 9 o'clock anyways.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, it's unanimous. Number six, Nick Darling was hoping that we will appoint James Aguiar Jr. as an Assistant Board of Health Agent. We received a memo from him dated November 27, 2017. I would like to respectfully ask that the Board of Selectmen appoint James Aguiar Jr. as Assistant Board of Health Agent for the town of Lakeville contingent upon successfully satisfying the town's pre-hiring requirements. And then he goes on to explain that when we hired Kevin Bernato, it created a vacancy because he was, played this role for the town, and that the fit, the... Then he talks about the financial aspects of all this stuff. Does anybody have any questions about this? There's nobody here to answer them. I move that we appoint James Aguiar Jr. as Assistant Board of Health Agent.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, it's unanimous. Agenda item number seven, we have a water connection application from Mark Knox, MJK Holdings for 303 Kenneth Welch Drive. So, he wants to hook up his new building to water in the industrial park.
It's a good idea to water because he's already built a building, so it'd be safe, they let him hook up.
Yeah, he could probably put in a well if he wanted to, but I think, you know...
This is a better idea.
Yeah, being that Taunton is right there, and I think that it is a good idea. So I move that we approve the requested application for connection to the city of Taunton Water.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, it's unanimous. Agenda item number eight, we received an email from Senator, State Senator, if you will, Mike Rodericks. Dear local municipal officials, in advance of the Senate's consideration for capital improvements bond bill H. 4018 and act providing for capital facility repairs and improvements for the Commonwealth, I would respectfully ask for your assistance in identifying capital projects that you would like to see prioritized for inclusion in the upcoming bond bill. My priorities are going to be your priorities in deliberations of this bill, therefore, please send me your priority project requests to my legislative director. So, what do we want to...
Is this something he asks for every year?
No, not typically, and I wasn't quite sure if we could ask him to increase the Chapter 90 bond.
Right, I mean, roads are our number one, I mean, you could do a town hall plan, you could do Rhode Island Road Route 79 that's in the abyss.
Well, that's already on the...
Oh, yeah, it's on there.
The tip.
We won't do that road...
Ever.
Before your retirement, so it's on there, it's not on a list that has any merit. But I don't understand what this really is. We saying, oh, well, we'll do a $2 million addition of the town hall, does that mean he's going to fund it? I don't understand what he's asking.
No, I think, I mean, probably could say something about the rotary, you know, if they wanted to, or like adding a lane on Route 44, or like something to help with major town infrastructure projects, you know?
Aside from doing Route 79 and giving more money to Chapter 90...
Put a light in at Bridge Street. Really?
I mean, we could, in anticipation of, yeah.
Right, light at Bridge Street, 79, rotary money.
And more Chapter 90.
And Chapter 90 money, those are really big.
I'll check with Jeremy.
Jeremy?
Check with Jeremy.
Spittle.
Why don't you check with Jeremy?
I'm sorry, his Jeremy, Spittle.
Jeremy's spoken. I don't even know what it's being asked to do. I really don't.
Jeremy Spittle. No, I agree, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know why...
I guess the first question is, why are they asking?
They never asked before.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Are they giving us no strings attached money? Let's make up a list.
I don't think they're going to do that.
We're inherently suspicious when they ask us.
One of the things that was talked about before, which, you know, I don't want to make your blood boil, was the whole, the dam issue and dredging the Masjid and blah, 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 which that fell apart and I'm not, it's not a...
Well, that's a surprise that fell apart.
Yeah, I haven't seen a meeting on that for a while.
Not in our town.
So...
Tear it down.
Not on my watch. All right, number nine, let's discuss the IT Director position. Reader is going to update us on a conversation she had with Tim Graybars regarding the IT Director position. Tell us what's going on.
Well, Tim was concerned to be the Director for the whole town for the eight to 12 hours that, you know, he would fall short on that, but the two chiefs, the Fire Chief and the Police Chief, would like to bring him on as their IT for those two departments. Phil has been helping us with the transfer of the assessors over here and keep Phil on through DynTech and let Tim get exposed to the whole town network. That's how I would like to move forward with this, if it was okay with the board.
Wasn't this part of the original plan anyways? I mean, I guess, maybe I...
I guess, I don't know.
I thought I was remembering that it was, we were going to hire somebody for Police and Fire, and then we also were looking to have somebody that would be the person who would do the rest of the town departments, and that way, and this is supposed to be under the direction of John Barker, who's here like an hour a week or whatever he is, that we were going to reduce Phil's position because of this and reduce our reliance on DynTech. But that doesn't seem to be the way that this is, I mean, I guess this is step one, but, I mean, that was a conversation we had probably like seven, eight months ago, at least, and so I don't...
Well, in, when I asked the board to approve the job description in September, I was hoping it would be the transition for the whole town.
This would be somebody who would do the entire town.
Eventually, right, so I would have to...
But didn't we already have a conversation, though, about the, because this, this job description is for the town one, not for the one that we had already talked about, which was the Police and Fire? So I kind of...
See, I don't remember the part of just doing Police and Fire right now.
We definitely had that conversation because I'm pretty sure that that was, especially because it doesn't state any of that in here, and when we went through this job description, it does talk about, you know, all it was was, when it mentioned the police station, and I'm pretty sure I remember that conversation, of saying that it didn't include the Police and Fire piece, that's a separate piece, this was just the relocation of the servers that were, you know, we're going to move over to...
The new police station.
The new police station. So, I feel like we had this conversation a while ago, and it probably was like July, where I thought we were looking to hire someone just for Police and Fire, and then this was the separate part of it, and it looks like this job hasn't been filled.
Nope.
So is this, are we advertising for this still, as part-time IT Director?
I did, and...
You didn't get anybody?
Well, Tim was interested in it, and Phil was going to apply, I didn't get an application from him, but...
Did we not do a job description for the Police and Fire piece?
No. This, I did, see, this was my intent, that this person would do everything.
I don't remember that being that conversation, but I don't know if anybody else remembers that.
I remember we were supposed to get together with John Barker and we haven't done anything.
I think what we need is, we need to review the plan, and I think we need, if you can just bullet point out this stuff, like Graybar is Police and Fire, and it's, you know, it's an expected timeframe on that, I mean, I guess that would be indefinite, but then what's the timeline on Phil? And what's the solution for IT for the rest of the town according to John Barker's plan? And then, what's the budget impact on all of this stuff? I mean, that's really what I'm concerned about.
Well, and what has John Barker been doing? Because the last time when we did meet with him, he said that he, I mean, did we just not bring him back on?
No, he's kind of fallen off the planet.
Like, what's his role then?
Well, I don't know, we haven't even talked.
So we got an IT strategic plan from him, but now we don't have anybody to execute it, because that was supposed to be his job, was to do the execution of it and using Phil, but then reducing Phil and bringing on somebody else, so we're not, we're kind of...
We're rudderless.
Well, and John... Well, and John's, he had listed everything that we, we, our backup was never tested. He had a list of things, we didn't have an inventory, and he worked with Phil to finish everything that needed to be done, um, and gave me the budgets for the next few years. But John's contract has run out, um, back in October, through October, uh, he worked with Phil, um, but he's been indisposed, um...
Okay, so do we need, is this even the right job description then, now? I mean...
We don't know, that's why we need Reader to just do a little research, get us that, get us that plan, and just do some analysis of it and determine what the next step is. I mean, I think, maybe this doesn't conform to that, but we don't, I don't think any of us really know. I think we were relying on a consultant that we are no longer under contract with.
Well, we, we were hope, I was hoping with this to fill the whole, uh, project.
Right, that didn't happen.
And, and meeting with Tim too, a lot of what we keep on us, you know, would be hosting, hosted what, um, I'm, I'm not sure of the term, but hosting it in the cloud.
Yep.
And not, uh, which is, um, very time-saving for the town.
Right, you don't buy your own service.
Yeah.
But, but we get that, but if, if Tim is the specialist, specialist with Police and Fire, I have no objection to hiring him part-time.
Yep.
But we don't have a plan, or an IT Director.
The whole...
And I'm not so sure, I need one, I was wishy-washy on it anyways, because we didn't get who you wanted. So you're back to ground zero, you either get a consultant to help us hire that person.
Right.
And if the guy isn't under contract, well, he isn't gonna come in here anyways. And he seemed, he seemed to be knowledgeable as far as when we got together with him, but that was so long ago.
Right.
Right.
And, and he did the plan, we don't have time or the desire to go back and reinvent the wheel. So it's either through a, I don't, it's either through a consultant who advises us, and the hiring process, one of us would be on that committee, if you will. But if Police and Fire needs someone, I don't object to having him support them.
They do, I mean, especially with the construction of the police station. We definitely need a body...
We should...
To manage that, so that we know, they know, I mean, all of the stuff's being set up in there for the entire town.
My, my suggestion is, we get this guy part-time.
Yep.
And then figure out what we're gonna do with an IT Director.
I guess, what would be helpful is probably to go back to, through the agendas and find when we discussed it, and just look at the minutes and see, you know, what happened.
Well, I, I know we're gonna have, we're gonna have...
I thought we hired this guy. For, I thought we hired the Police and Fire guy.
Right, right, right. It doesn't make any difference, I think we should hire him.
Okay, I would, yeah.
We did vote to hire him.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we hire Tim Graybars as a part-time IT position to support the Police and Fire, for a, I'll, I'll say a maximum of twelve hours a week.
Again.
That's it. I'm not gonna say, hey, I'm, don't, if he, can he do it in twelve?
Well, he'll also gonna be consulting with the new police station, so some weeks might go over twelve.
Twelve hours a week.
Okay, all right.
If he can do twelve hours a week as an average, I'm all set.
Okay.
I'm all set. And then we need to go back.
And we already established the rate and everything like that before, right?
I think we did all that.
Yeah.
I think we did all that.
Yeah, it's all set, okay. I'll, I'll second it again.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right. Agenda item number ten, vote to sign the bond anticipation note ban renewal. Here it is, folks, the renewal for the pumper truck with equipment for fire, the fire department in the amount of $440,000.
I did find out the low bidder, um, was Cape Cod Five, when I did the agenda Monday, I didn't have this information.
All right, Cape Cod Five Cents Savings Bank was awarded the bid at 1.35 percent. So I move to approve and sign the bond anticipation note ban in the amount of $444,000 for various purposes to be issued on December nineteenth, twenty-seventeen, and due July thirteenth, twenty-eighteen, payable to Cape Cod Five Cents Savings Bank with an interest rate of 1.35 percent.
Second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that will come due with all our other bans on July thirteenth.
Yep, it was. The motion carries, it's unanimous. Number eleven, discuss and vote to appoint, discuss and vote to appoint the Town Coordinator as Selectmen's Designee to the Regional District's Negotiating Committee. Regional School District is in the midst of negotiating a teacher's contract, of which the outcome will impact, well, the outcome will impact us indefinitely, but it's a three-year contract, so they're in the middle of dealing with that now. Do we want to appoint Lorraine as a Designee so that she may attend if Mitzi isn't able to?
I thought, I thought we had done that. If we need a vote, we should do the vote, but I still want the vote of the agreement to be in Mitzi's hands advising us through, through, through Lorraine.
Well, I think, you know, one of the, the big issues that kinda came up is the fact that, you know, the last meeting, which wasn't the one that was original, like, the last regional FinCom meeting, there was a discussion of when the next meeting with the executive session negotiation would be, which then I put into the calendar. And then the night before, a different meeting, a Tuesday night, when all of a sudden we have a meeting on the following Wednesday, they say they're going to have a conversation about the, so we quickly realized that there's going to be a lot of times when there's going to be a conflict between having a meeting here, and when we're going to have, you know, when they've decided, or they've got some new information that they're gonna bring to executive session. So, they did send out a list of what they anticipate to be additional meetings, um, you know, where they'll have executive sessions.
Yep.
Yet, at the same time, I think that's pretty subject to change, considering the last time, when they had mentioned there was going to be one that was there, you know, if there's something that happens in between, they haven't scheduled out their negotiation committee meetings out through, maybe they have, you know, I have no idea, through March, but I would say that it's pretty subject to change, and I would like to, um, vote Lorraine in as an alternate in the event that I can't go.
Yes.
Not to change her as the Designee.
Yes.
But to have her be an alternate, um, if I can't go.
Yep. So we're gonna amend that to the Board of Selectmen's alternate Designee slash Designee.
Okay.
Yep. That's the motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are selling an assessor's building, and we're moving them here. So to do that, um, we need to know what the plan is for the town hall.
Well, Nate didn't, um, finish working on the budget, um, he's looking at phasing it, and right now he's around forty to fifty thousand to make the alterations that are in the plan. But I can update you on...
Is that the, the plan in terms of the, the footprint, or I should say, the design that he, that we received last time?
Yeah, yes.
Did you have a chance to look at that?
I, I looked at that, and Tommy Robinson, I think Nate's, I think Nate is indicating Tommy Robinson would be doing it, I think.
Did it seem reasonable to you in terms of the use of space and everything?
Yeah.
It was all the electricity, all of, everything that would be entailed, so quickly tonight, Nate's been trying to get it done all day, and he just got tied up.
Keep on it, I don't...
Yeah, we should put it on, we should put it on the next agenda and get an update.
Every single agenda until this is done, because this is, um, still not the, the result I wanna see, and it's six months late. So, we gotta have a plan, we gotta have an idea of the, we have to know what it's gonna cost, we have to know that there's a plan in place, and we have to have a calendar so that it can happen, um, because that building is, is gonna be sold in three weeks, pretty much.
So I have rented a star, storage pod for the assessors, will be delivered on Friday. I've hired, um, I'm meeting out over there tomorrow with McDonald Movers to bring over the file cabinets and take apart those desks, um, for December eighteenth. Shredder was supposed to be there tomorrow at noon, Highway was gonna move everything down, that's been rescheduled for Monday, which I was available. Um, and one other, Tom is coming in.
And Tommy Robinson's gonna start in here on Friday, wouldn't know when...
Friday afternoon, he's gonna do the half-door and a small counter for them.
Which only lets them go in that room, obviously, right.
Right. Yeah, but, but what I don't want to happen is, they move in there and then nothing else happens.
Well, the, the phasing part of it, how, what Nate has looked at is, the first part would be to build this wall and work on where the assessors will go first, that would be the first plan. And then get the treasure collector in that room, um, and we'll move Tracy up here during the transition. He just didn't have time to...
Yeah.
Show you the whole phasing, but...
That's great.
Yep.
We'll add it to the next agenda.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions about that agenda item?
No, keep it on that, like I said.
All right. January tenth and twenty-fourth, February seventh and twenty-first, what do those dates have in common? They're proposed Selectmen meetings. Isn't that great?
I'd like to change most of them.
Go right ahead.
Um, can we do January third and seventeenth?
I don't know, I don't have my new calendar yet. Can we?
We have them delivered.
Wow. I hope I have one. I'm still on May, cause you can hide the stuff under it.
I'm, I'm on the right one, I only got, I'm down, I cut the one page.
No, I don't really need them.
Don't touch my calendar.
I'm good, no, I'm good.
Don't touch my stuff.
I can go through and get rid of them.
January third and tenth.
Third and seventeenth.
Seventeenth. And February, what would you like to do? I don't want you to miss Valentine's Day.
There's a regional FinCom supposedly.
These are Sundays.
I think that's what I had originally...
That's why I don't want them. Um, and then that, so, I'm not sure what the, there's a regional FinCom meeting supposedly February seventh, I'm not sure if that's happening or not? We can keep the seventh and the twenty-first, I'm okay with that? And we can just communicate to them that, like, I'm fine with it. I just wanted to put that out.
Yeah, I don't care when they are.
Okay, so seven and twenty-one's fine.
I'm also, we'll, we'll work around your schedule because you're gainfully employed.
Oh wait, when's the, um, oh, never mind, I was thinking of the MMA convention, but that's on a Friday.
Yeah, it's the week of the seventeen.
I, I don't know that we want, I, I don't know that we want you to skip that regional FinCom, I mean, you're going, you're going tomorrow night.
Well, it's supposed to be on the first Thursday of the month, so I don't know why it's on the first Wednesday.
Oh, wow.
You know what I mean, like, it's a weird, I'm not sure why it's there.
Okay.
It's not on the usual schedule.
Wanna just resolve that maybe tomorrow night?
Yeah, I can resolve that, we can put it down for now.
Do the seventh and, how's the twenty-first?
Twenty-first is fine.
But, but resolve that maybe tomorrow.
Twenty-first is school vacation week, um, doesn't matter.
We thought of that, and we didn't know if that would...
No, I have to work forever. It's tax season, that's the only problem.
Like hunting season.
Yeah, and it's not even about taxes, that's the worst part, it's just called that. So that's fine. And then January third, do I have a dentist appointment at four o'clock, so that'll be fun.
Those are the dates I picked at first, but then I thought with Christmas and all that, maybe you'd wanna break in between.
All right, human calendar, you got them in there?
Sorry, I have to put them down in a visual, uh, pattern, or else I can't, uh, remember it as a human calendar. There, now I've seen it, it's etched in my brain. Okay. Good.
We have some meeting minutes from October, no, August one, September sixth, September thirteenth, September twenty-seven, October fourth, October eleventh, and November thirteenth of twenty-seventeen. Anybody read them?
Well, I got, we need to schedule one.
I read them like I usually do.
Look what I got slightly excited about, that it said the IT strategic plan update, but it didn't really have anything. It just said have the plan ready to go, and the vendor picked out, by September thirtieth, twenty-seventeen, which...
We're right on top of that.
I don't know what that means, but the bottom of that paragraph, page two, I don't even know what it means when it says the state dispenses the funds, depending upon the number of applications they receive, with the IT plan, which the Highway Department will eventually move into, the stormwater management plan should be updated. I don't know what that has to do with the IT plan.
No, he was talking about his, um, grant for the, um, the culvert on...
So why does it say the IT plan? That's what I didn't understand, cause I scanned through that one.
Mitzi, which one are you on? Okay, and then he, Jeremy went back with the IT plan.
The September, August first.
That was with, um...
That was the stormwater.
GIS, yeah.
He said, listen, why are we doing this? To change the law.
Yeah, I just don't understand it when I reread it, so...
Wanted to keep going, and Nate and I are saying, why are we spending any money on this?
Oh, there it is.
They won't enact it to five years after reading.
As long as it's after.
Yeah.
I don't care how many years.
But that's what, that's what that was about, was the stormwater, I think, mapping.
And I think this was our last, um, prior, you know, your priority list meeting, we were trying to have quarterly meetings.
I remove that we recommend the, uh, meeting minutes.
Do you accept that as is?
Well, no, I mean, if she want, if she's gonna revise them, then...
I don't even know what it was, and I don't really care, honestly, like, it doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense to me when I read it back, usually I can understand what we were talking about there, but I don't even know what that means.
Right, I think it had to do with...
The people GIS, that part of the IT, which...
Stormwater management, we didn't wanna do, we didn't wanna do it.
But he's done...
Not only, once they enact it, it doesn't take effect for years.
If people understand what it says, that's totally fine with me.
Well, I think that's what it is.
Okay, good, I'm good with that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do business.
Did he, oh, okay.
That's all.
No, no.
Has anybody heard from Joan Menard lately?
Yes, I have.
Well, as a matter of fact, I have too.
Wow, that's amazing.
She texted me on Sunday, as if I would call somebody on Sunday.
She texted me on Friday, and, and texted me again over the weekend, and I said I will respond to your texts during working hours.
Well, she called me on Monday.
I called her on Monday.
If I can just update you first, Paul Raffrin came to me and said that Senator Menard wanted to meet with me first, and maybe one Selectman, and I told him...
So he's involved in the one that she's involved?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cause remember Tracy, when we were trying to figure out?
Yeah.
And I said, why do they want to come in if they don't want anything?
Right, you want, so I told Paul that the Board of Selectmen has the policy that they're not gonna, on these...
What was the piece of property?
They were looking at two.
Just for marijuana?
TL Edwards, TL Edwards at the end of the intersection, and over the Lakeville Nursery property.
Well, okay, all right. The TL Edwards obviously is, is that industrial?
Yes, it is, but it's in a residential area.
But that's, well, that doesn't matter if it's owned industrial, but it's just, it's a terrible spot. It's not near the highway, it's out in, in Illinois. spot. It's not near the highway. It's out in middle of nowhere.
Right, and the nursery is not properly zoned.
Right.
Right.
But everything around it is zoned industrial.
But that's actually an ideal spot.
It's a good spot, right.
We love it out there. I think that's where it all belongs so we could, I think at the town meeting, unrelated to marijuana, we should probably change that zoning for there to be industrial. Now, could someone like Market Basket still go in there? It can still be a lesser function.
Overlay, right?
Yeah.
So, if it was an industrial overlay.
I think that's an important possible, Erin, to maybe get that changed. Unrelated to the marijuana people. We'd like a business or an industrial or marijuana to be out there.
Center can go in. I think that came up before.
Can what go in there?
Shopping, go in an industrial. I don't, I'm not sure.
What I tried to explain to her was that changing zoning is very difficult. Ideally, they should find property that is not, doesn't need to be changed, but that, you know, Nate could really explain what's allowed and what zoning, and that I don't meet outside of this board. So, I'm not going to sit down with anybody and have a meeting with somebody without you all hearing the same exact conversation. I watched how Alan Frawley got kind of painted in that light with the DOT, and that was a state agency. So, I'm not even going to entertain that idea with a private individual or a private company looking to do whatever they want to do. We, and I explained this to her and I think it's, we have a consistent, reasonable approach to how we've been dealing with this issue, in my opinion. And I invited her to have a meeting with us. She was reluctant to want to just jump right in and have a meeting. That's her issue. I don't know what else to say other than that's the process where a public body, we meet in public, we all hear the same information, we all share in that dialogue so that we can all be on the same page. We might not all agree, but we all should have the opportunity to have the same conversation relative to anything that we may be deciding on. So, that's really where I left it with her. And I'm hoping that if they are serious, that they resurface and they, you know, actually take the time to come in and see that we don't bite and that we're reasonable people and, you know, not to say I'm going to go out and champion a zoning change for them, but it may, it's the first step, you know, is sitting down and meeting in public.
I'd like to try to move that zoning change as an overlay, an overlay is the proper term for that area anyways. It's an ideal spot for, never mind marijuana. I mean, if some business, if some industrial wanted to go in there, the other side of the road's industrial, it's not spot zoning. I think it should be changed anyways.
Yeah. I mean, the conversation I had with her is just that she needs to speak to the zoning enforcement officer, you know, and contact the office for that, but...
Right. So, we don't have a lot of industrial area. I think we have the industrial park. We have a couple of little spots on Crooked Lane, which are miniscule. They're not big.
Right, yes.
They're not big enough to support anything.
Derek Maxey.
So...
That was the CDC's first map that we used at the Lakeville Arts and Music Festival where we covered it in plexiglass and had people create their own Lakeville by putting, like, color forms essentially on there.
Pacha!
Now, we'd have to upgrade it with marijuana leaves.
The red one on the very top, Erin, I think, is the Lakeville Business Park up there.
For whatever reason, Muckey's side is all business.
And the other side is industrial.
The other side's all industrial.
So, this is, so this is the business side.
Right.
Yes. Left is in business, right's industrial, so we should really change the left to be industrial.
What is the adult entertainment district? Is that the industrial portion of that area or does the adult entertainment district also include the business portion up there?
I don't know how, do you see where that is, Erin? What's that zone that adult?
It's just in the industrial side.
Movie theater, as we call it.
It's all industrial.
Okay. So, the left side, I think, should become industrial anyways.
As well.
As well.
With an overlay?
If that's the right term, yes. I think so. Unrelated to marijuana, what were you going to say? You can't have retail and industrial.
I don't think you can have one.
Well, no, we just told these guys, all these marijuana guys, they can open a retail spot. We're going to, because the state's going to come and say, "Well, you have medical marijuana, you can have a retail separate door."
Yeah, but it's a special permit anyways.
They're going to say that. They're going to override your district. Do you think that's the way that's going to go, Mitzi?
What's that?
If you have a medical...
Yes, it's what they've been saying is pretty much it's part of it under a special permit, special permit.
They do.
It's local special permit.
Okay, okay.
Only with certain things, though.
See, retail's in business.
They'll say, you know, the marijuana people will want to be, where we've zoned the marijuana to be...
Adult bookstore, adult motion picture theater, special permit, industrial.
Industrial, but retail is there and there's our registered, so we would have to allow...
Registered marijuana dispensary as defined by MGL, which...
I think, Erin, part of that, not having a retail in an industrial is probably a mistake. Let's say the Talbots wanted to have an outlet there. That would prevent them.
If they were in industrial.
They are in industrial. They're in the...
Right.
In the business park?
Business park.
Yeah.
So, I think that the retail should be allowed...
In industrial or business?
I think so. To support that business.
Or like a cash and carry that exists for...
You don't...
The medical, the marijuana people, of course, can do it.
They're going to do it.
Right, they're allowed to anyways.
But what about someone like a Talbot's, which hasn't come before us, but that happens a lot of places that manufacture stuff.
Yeah, that's...
Like a cash and carry.
Christmas tree shop as an example.
The last gasp of a dying corporation.
Is that industrial, do you think, Erin, where the Middleboro Industrial Park is?
They might have different uses.
Wait a minute.
Do you think that's industrial?
Large-scale retail building, industrial.
You see, you can go in, I think, and you can buy stuff.
It says that large-scale retail building is industrial.
Yeah, under the...
That's okay.
Yes.
That's okay.
Special permit in business, but that says large-scale retail building with thirty-five thousand or more square feet, but is that the whole building or is that just the retail portion?
It's got to be the whole.
But any other kind of retail in a industrial needs a special permit.
But it can be.
That's okay. Yeah, you told me it couldn't be.
I knew there was something, I knew there was something about retail.
I wouldn't know. I don't.
Yeah, as long as I can get it, that's okay.
Yeah.
I don't, I can't remember anything, so if I don't have that in front of me, I have no idea what the zoning is.
But, but I think that we really talked about trying to push companies up there.
Right.
And I think we'll find that the Lakeville Nursery is just business zoned and it probably should be zoned business.
For a little bit more.
Right. I think you have a shot at people going in there.
All right. Well, you know, hopefully they'll want to talk to us then. All right. So, that was my new business thing. Old Business is an update from Rita regarding a letter to Karen Polito for the MBTA solar canopy fixes-in project.
Well, I tried to call her first and they put me on, you could talk to a strategic...
A robot?
A constituent.
Constituent aid services?
So, I waited, yes, and then...
What is your name? Constituent aid?
So, then it said, "If you want to leave a message," you know, hit one. I hit one. Voicemail's full. So, I can...
This is the Lieutenant Governor's office.
This is like calling the IRS. It's like the same thing.
So, then I...
"I'm not home right now, but you can leave a message. Sorry, the mailbox is full."
Then I, I did take advantage of their email, but you can't attach anything such as the letter to the governor or whatever. And I just told her who I was.
That's not the avenue we need. That's not going anywhere.
Right, right.
So, and in the meantime, I FedExed her a letter saying how disappointed the Board of Selectmen was.
So, maybe we'll get a nice letter from...
But I'm not sure. I got a...
I was hoping for a Christmas wreath.
Right after that email, an hour or two later, Rick Cologne calls me from Mass DOT.
I was on the, I was texting with Mike Rodrick's. Well, I called him and then he sent me a text saying he was about to board a plane. He was coming back. And I said, "Well, I just wanted to talk about the letter to Baker and the solar project." And then he texted back and he said, "I'll have Rick Cologne call you." It's like, that's not what I want, but that's fine. And then he got on a plane and I couldn't get any through to him anymore.
Somehow, maybe the next step is we carbon copy Mike and Keiko on these. Maybe we ought to...
We did on those letters.
We ought to say to them, "Can you deliver the, can you deliver these to these people? Can you get us a meeting in an audience to someone other than Department of Transportation?"
I asked for a meeting with her.
But I think Keiko, Keiko and Mike are only in at the State House. We're not going
to get in there.
Get Pacheco involved.
We're not going to get in there. That's your suggestion.
He yells. That's his thing.
Somehow, we need to drag those two into it and maybe you could just put a call into them again and say, "Listen, this is just bullshit. We're not going to keep going around." Can you get someone to take this seriously?
Right. This is...
Like, if Rick Cologne, nice guy and all, but he's, he's, he comes down to basically tell us, "There's nothing you can do. This is happening." And then he's the guy that we have to then ask, "What can we do to not have this happen?" Is the guy that told us that there's nothing we can do?
It's like when you ask, like, "I want to speak to your supervisor."
Right.
Right. And you get Rick Cologne.
Right.
And Mike Rodrick's clearly said to me, "If you people of Lakeville do not want the solar canopies, you're not going to get them." So, how do we get those two involved?
Exactly.
If they want a letter to say, hey, you know, they can take our letters and deliver them to Karen Polito and Governor Baker.
But I don't even know if the, if the, if the...
Well, right.
If Charlie Baker or Karen Polito is the answer, but Mike and Keiko should know whether that's the answer and Rick Cologne is just not the answer.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, we need to get this...
And I sort of told him that. When I thought he was Jeremy Spittle, I'm telling him, "Yeah."
Right, but Mike and, Mike and Keiko, even though Mitzi and Erin will do something on their own, let's just have Rita chase those two down.
Absolutely. Oh, totally.
Tell us what to do. We're, we're...
Right, we're not getting any straight answers.
We're getting nowhere.
We're being told multiple things from state agencies of, "We're not closing the station. We're closing the station." We have to hear it from other meetings in other towns. And we just want to actually speak to somebody that may be able to actually have some influence over the decision because we're getting very frustrated here without anybody actually listening to us.
Exactly.
Right.
And that's what our representatives are there for, is to take care of these issues for us.
Right. Keiko's out of town until after the first of the year, I think, but Michael can do it. Michael's the, Michael can do it.
I'll do that.
His off at his services, but let's hold him to it.
All right. Do we have any other business?
Brief file, I believe, but...
Okay, yep.
Just, just the Historical Commission Regarding Massachusetts Preservation Project Fund Grant Program. We don't, can, can we apply for that? We don't have a CPA agreement, but the historical has always given us capital projects that we never do.
What they apply for, this goes back to not having a historical district.
Well...
Our Historical Commission will apply.
But I talk about apply through someone like Sherpa to someone, someone that writes the grants.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
The money goes...
Then if there's nothing to do, why do we have it here?
Well, it's...
And let us know that we can't do anything?
Well, no, it comes addressed to the Board of Selectmen, so...
Throw it away then.
Yeah, so let's go to this guy.
Can't do something with it.
But we do, if we had a historic district.
We don't have one.
Hey, you never know.
We don't have one.
But it's a very short one. The Sampson Cemetery, the Old Town House, and the Historic Library. That would make, and would be eligible for grants.
Selectmen aren't doing it.
No, tell the, to apply.
But I was offering Sherpa to someone. You have their services available. They're better at grant writing than most of everyone else.
But in that case, it's, the money goes to the ones that have historic districts. You don't have to have the CPA.
Okay.
Okay?
Is that a Beatles cover band?
I don't know. What'd you say? Inspired by? No.
So, I think we're going into executive session. I move we enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2183 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the teachers' contract if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board, of which we have no bargaining position. And the chair so declares, I suppose so, and pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2183, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of Trocky v. Lakeville et al., Plymouth Superior Court, CA, Number 1783 CV 00700, holding the meeting in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation position, and the chair so declares, which I do, and pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2187, to comply with the open meeting law, Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 22F, approval of executive session minutes for November 1, November 8, 2017, and not to come back into open session. So, help me go on.
Because you can't just say you're going into executive session, huh?
I know it.
I'll second that if we're seconding them.
All right.
Poutly?
Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
And Holland Beck?
Aye.